Call me in order. The right is to the question please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, the foundation of our God, in the name of our beloved and faithful citizens of this land.
Thank you. Call roll.
Dagners, Kramer, Kirk, Martin, Stevens, and Wender.
Present, uh, let the record show that Andy Pinkski has served the yes, I agree. Thank you, Dolly. And also note that, uh, Controller is absent, had emergency appetite coming to us Friday this Saturday. Lady back in stages.
Thank you, Dolly. Okay, we'll move on. Motion in the House is in order to set the agenda with the one amendment, uh, regarding this bill for release of, uh, for release fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars.
Chairman, I do. We approve the agenda with the addition.
Move by John. Move by Barb. All in favor. Signify by aye. All those saying sign, Dolly, you got the addition?
Yes, I do.
Next is the meeting minutes of December four. The regular board meeting and the finance meeting December fifteenth. What's your opinion?
Mr. Chairman, I have moved to say.
Move by Joe. Support. Port Barb. Comments? None. All in favor. Signify by aye. Aye.
Chairman, I went to abstain on the finance meeting. I was not there. I had another meeting that night.
Okay, thank you, John. We are done with citizen time. Any citizen want to address the board? Please come to the podium. Any citizen want to address the board? So, no takers, we'll move on. Resolutions, legislation, Barb.
We have nothing to make.
Reports committee, finance. John, would you handle this portion of the meeting for him?
I move to approve the monthly bills for December in the amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty cents.
Move by John. Report. Port Barb. Comments? Roll call please.
Dagners.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Stevens. Wender.
By motion carried.
Okay, then the next one is seventy-two. I move to approve the twenty-sixteen budget amendment, number five. Do you want me to read the amendments, or?
It's up to you, John.
Okay, the budget amendment, uh, number five, one, is increase the account number for supplies and CSSM, supplies by two thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. Increase the account, uh, or re grant by two thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-six cents, or re grant was awarded at seven thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-six cents instead of five thousand, which was a hundred. Number two, we want to decrease the account, uh, controller salary by thirteen thousand three hundred eight dollars and ninety-six cents. And we want to decrease the account number separation pay by thirteen thousand three hundred eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Funds taken from separation pay transferred to controller salary to cover payout of previous controller. Number three, uh, increase the account number for underserved salary by twenty-five thousand four hundred eighty dollars. We want to decrease the account of separation pay by ten thousand four hundred eighty dollars. And we want to decrease the account contingency by fifteen thousand. These are funds to cover the benefits, for payout benefits for the undersheriffs. Number four, we want to increase account, uh, capital outlet computers by four thousand six hundred dollars. We want to decrease the account of internet by four thousand six hundred dollars. These computers were purchased for district court.
Okay, there's support to that motion.
I have support.
Port by Joe. Any further comments? Roll call please.
Kramer? Yes. Stevens?
Yes.
Wender?
Aye.
Dagners?
Motion carried. We got the addition done.
Uh, seventy-three. I move to approve request for Dixa to release the first installment payment of fifty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars from the Dixon County Senior Management on January sixth.
Move by John. Support by Barb. Comments?
Mr. Chairman, uh, is this amount going to decrease with the amount, if the board approves to pay the Margaret seniors, that additional six thousand dollars, is that going to decrease that amount?
I don't know. We'd have to talk to Barb, but I think you just shift some figures. And he might even have it in here already. Do you know Diana?
The first payment will be the same, and then any, any adjustments will be made on the second, third, or fourth payment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Signify by aye. No, we need roll call, Dolly.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wender?
Aye.
Dagners?
Yes.
And Kramer? Yes.
Okay, eight ninety-five, Barb.
No report tonight.
Dix County, Joe.
I have a report.
Planning and zoning, Barb.
We have the Dickinson Conservation District meeting minutes of November, November ninth and the half.
Okay, DHHS Dixa, Barb.
Um, we had our meeting today at Dixa, um, and otherwise, no. Looks like there was unapproved minutes in here. Well, anyway, just, I'll just say one report fifty-nine.
Okay, DIH, Joe.
Uh, Board of Local Meeting Minutes, in lieu of the president for the record, and some sad news today that we received the resignation of Steve Markman today. Um, we start, fill out his contract for two more months and then move on. Uh, so, six, seven years, while he's been here for a long time, but he's done a wonderful job. So, we're missing it, we'll have to start looking for a move this way.
Okay, thank you. North Point, that's, and Markman Committee, we got the meeting minutes of November seventeenth and December eighth for the record. Congress, John.
We have no report today, Mr. Chairman.
Equalization, John.
Um, I have no report, other than I've seen in the paper that Dark Star Issuer is going to come back on board twenty-seventeen.
That part I'm not exactly sure as far as, thank you, if that's part of my understanding, but, um, you know, the opposite of what's that. All right, head on that, but, um, we've already seen the results of that for two thousand sixteen, so a little more hopeful than two thousand seventeen, but there remains to be seen. Everybody did want to talk a little bit about the personal property rebate for the industrial personal property. Probably, and we talked about it for the last eighteen months or so, this is the first year it was implemented statewide. It was part of the proposal one that was passed in August of two thousand fourteen and implemented for the first time this year. And, uh, anyone that levy to village in summer like we did for county operations got refunded here in November. And, uh, to our surprise, it was much more than we anticipated, which is a good thing. But it was that case statewide for everyone. Uh, basically, what the state has told us is the personal property that they anticipated losing wasn't quite as much, they allocated next amount of dollars to refund the personal property exceptions. And so that came through, like I said, in a more positive manner than we anticipated. So, I can't say that's going to happen everywhere, but this is a good time for us and any other governmental unit that levy. So, everybody's going to see more on a local level, whether it's the cities, counties, townships.
Can you give us some numbers?
Um, I think the number we had was nine hundred seventy-nine thousand. That was the amount of the refund. And as substantially off from where we were anticipating, uh, we were thinking closer to a half a million. So, there was a, you know, pleasant surprise. But like I said, everyone's going to benefit from that statewide. For this year, next year, we don't know. So, uh, they did tell us at a meeting back in December ninth, if it was in Marquette, that the actors paid more people filing than they did this time around. So, uh, remains to be seen how that will develop, but at least good news for this year.
Okay, thank you, State Department, John. Okay, building supply, real estate remodeling, John.
I have no report, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, public safety, my committee. We got two gentlemen in white shirts here tonight. Do I interview them, anything you want to add?
This is my last meeting. Um, ever since I first put a uniform on in May of nineteen eighty-six, whether it was corrections, dispatch, uh, road patrol, under sheriff and sheriff, um, it's been an honor to work with this board and previous boards. It's been an honor to, um, represent the citizens of this county. I, I'm going to miss it, but I feel very confident that Sheriff Elect Rutter is going to continue to move this office in the direction that the county would like to see us and the citizens of this county deserve. So, again, thank you.
Okay, Sheriff, I'm going to comment. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, uh, make a motion, I request a resolution honoring Sheriff Sal for his service, service department, and thank him very much for being a kind board.
Okay, move by John.
I support that.
Or Joe. I'm going to comment, that's good to be, all those in favor, signify by aye. All those saying sign, motion carried.
Chairman, I have one more thing. So, you have to come to one more meeting.
Wear your jeans though, if you want.
Okay, Parks Committee, Joe.
I have another report.
Air Force, my committee, no report. Fair Board, John.
Um, the Fair Board meeting minutes of December sixth, uh, November sixteenth for information. And I have one more question to the Fair Board. Um, we are preparing our money back, really a ton of trailer at the end of the year. Uh, due letters very quick after through, uh, chair. Uh, we are coming up with off and on, people saying they didn't receive their premiums. So, we turned back, uh, thirty-some thousand dollars, I believe it was. We're holding a thousand dollars until we close this all up. I just want to let the county board know that we have that in the bank, in the military bank, and we're just holding onto it for, say, probably April, and then we'll turn that one off.
Good. John, we haven't seen a financial report from last year's fair, other than that brief one you gave.
You got the hundred twenty day report done, when you get that copy.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, John? Okay, Library Board of Lands, we got their meeting minutes of December thirteenth, employee relations, John.
Now, we have, uh, I move we approve a request of the Sheriff Elect Rutter to fill an upcoming full-time road control duty vacancy.
Do you want to talk on that, Sheriff, or what?
That's just, uh, we, due to the promotions that went about from the undersheriff to the lieutenant, uh, which is this morning, yesterday, February, yesterday morning, uh, this is the vacancy, he was a road deputy, now, uh, is the road lieutenant. So, that vacancy is due to him moving up. It's not an addition or anything, it's just status quo, maintain the seven and a half.
Well, I think it's something we got to move on tonight. So, board, what's your opinion?
This is our policy, right? So, why should we know?
Well, January one is, uh, a week, less than a week away.
Right after posting in New Orleans.
I personally think this is a no brainer. But that's a board decision.
We had Sheriff, so we'll all talk about this that time and, and, and give us reasons why it was important. And so this is just a follow-up, but I really appreciate the statistics on here because...
There was just a brief, well, new for you, I could have went quite a lot more length with what really goes on and what more they actually do and do. That was just a little brief synopsis of what they do in some of the most, other than more, uh, they do on more of a daily basis.
Okay, motion in order. Do you want to make us approve or deny? Too true. Oh, you did, John, I didn't hear you. Okay, there's support to that, folks, Joe. Thank you. Does that roll call, if you would, Dolly?
Wender?
Aye.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Dagners?
Yes. Okay, motion carried. Hospital Committee, Joe.
We have one item tonight, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the reappointment of trustees Jeff Catbell and Dan Winterminy, two four-year terms on the Dickinson County of Care Strikethood Board of Trustees, as appointed by the Hospital Board of Trustees.
Move by Joe. Support. Port Barb. Comments?
Comments, um, these, these two are very good trustees, uh, very well, been honored quite a while now, and, um, very good asset to that board and community.
Okay, anything further? All those in favor, signify by aye. Aye. All those saying sign, motion carried, group, construction, move, John.
We have the construction position meeting minutes of October eighteenth for information.
Okay, Bay West, John.
Uh, no report, Mr. Chairman.
Dixon County, that's the Fair Board Committee, Joe.
We got three items tonight, Mr. Chairman. Uh, number one, I would move to approve the job description for Veterans Service Officer for the DSO position.
Okay, move by Joe. Support. Port Barb. Comments?
This is something that was developed by, I mean, that's been longstanding.
Well, Brian Moore, comment.
Brian Moore, this has got, um, pretty, pretty basic, basic stuff, but, uh, it's what's needed for the job, and also, um, I think he took a lot of stuff from some other county students together.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by aye. Aye. All those saying sign, motion carried.
I move to approve, uh, number two, authorize the controller in conjunction with the Veterans Affairs Committee to fill a part-time DSO position.
Move by Joe. Support. Port Barb. No, this is... Comments?
There's a meeting coming up on the third at eight-thirty, which I believe that's when that would happen.
And, uh, the controllers, I'm going to fill that position.
Yes.
Okay, any further questions?
I have one question. Is this, this, uh, if we authorize this now, this is for the year coming up, for the full year?
It's for the full year. As we go through the year, there's going to be two positions, um, the first one, we need to get the organization going, and as, we don't have as much money in the first year as we hold the second, we're just, Brian's look at that through the year.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Barb. All those saying sign, motion carried.
And item number three, I move to approve, ratify the Veterans Affairs Committee decision to hire Mr. Mike Miller as intern DSO.
Move by Joe. Support. Port Barb. Comments?
Colonel, this is Mike, doesn't want this job other than to fill it in, uh, if it takes a couple of months, uh, until we interview and hire, um, someone to replace him. So, this would be shortly, uh, very, part-time, part-time job until we get someone to replace him.
Okay, any further, um...
Is there any plan for, uh, Florida support for the office?
As of right now, no. That will be discussed in the future.
Okay.
Carol, who has been over there for years, was the last day to date, and, um, she's not interested in moving over to the county, but she's, and also a big woman to the Green Bay area, so that's all for discussion later.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Oppose? Very. Fine. John, show John opposed. Okay, thank you. Uh, we are back to citizen time. Any citizen want to address the board? Please come forward. I don't see any more movement. On to Mr. Overly, Barb.
Okay, uh, nine-eight, we have to make an appointment to the Solid Waste Management Planning Committee. A general public, uh, position, one partial term to expire on six, one, two thousand nineteen, our applicant is Mr. Richard Wales. I move that we appoint Mr. Wales to the, to the Solid Waste Management Planning Committee.
Move by Barb. Support. Port John, I see Mr. Wales is in the back tonight. Okay, all of them favor, signify by aye. Aye. All those saying sign, motion carried.
We have petition.
Petition, move by Barb.
First of all, uh, I move that we approve the request from Upcap to appoint a commissioner to the UP Energy Work Group for twenty-seventeen.
I support.
Move by Barb. Support by Joe. Does this mean we appoint one now?
I have a tension.
Or down the road?
Well, they want to get this going. This is something Upcap can talk about now for a few months, and with all the energy concerns we have from the UP, um, the difference in cost from the Sioux, to out in Oregon, from here to Marquette is so different. A lot of the commissioners in the UP are concerned as to what utility companies are doing, and, uh, I think John would be a perfect fit for this, because of his background, uh, he probably would be the best suited to take this position, but I think this is needed because we've talked about his concerns for months and years, and Upcap has not thought into this.
I have one thing too. This was brought up at the last, uh, media commissioner conference, was a topic of discussion, and it was a good topic, and it needed to go longer, because it, there's a lot of information out there that needs to be researched. So, I think it's a good, uh, appointment, and wherever it gets it, uh, to require, require a lot of, uh, work in the country.
Okay, it's been moved and supported.
And I have a question. Um, do, first of all, we need to find out if we have to be members of Upcap to do this?
We are.
We are. Okay, and the second thing is, we have to make sure this is on the list of approved meetings then, for, when we do our organization meeting?
And I do want to time that, but I was going to suggest we approve this tonight and then approve the appointment on January third, if you want. Is that okay? Okay, all those in favor, signify by aye. Aye. All those saying sign, motion carried. On the next one, I don't address it before you move. I talked to, um, Brian today, our controller, about this, told him I didn't really understand it, and I have table question mark here. He said the best thing would be table it till he gets back, Barb. If you would move.
I move to table, uh, the adoption of a mortgage servicing process for Mishta, CD, EG grants.
Move by Barb.
I support.
Port Joe. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. All those saying sign, motion carried.
Okay, I move we approve the subordination request for Dickinson County Rehabilitation Program.
Move by Barb. Support? Support. Port Joe. Comments? Questions? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. All those motion carried.
All right, we have, uh, the Medical Control Board meeting minutes for March ninth, June fifteenth, September seventh. That's my committee that I attend regularly. Uh, you'll find it's interesting reading, they do a lot with emergency medical services.
Well, I like to comment on that. I read those meeting minutes, and I didn't see one place where the county should be involved in that board. Um, not once, or we referred to it, for me, it was mostly E and D and stuff like that, so, I don't know. I'm not high on this committee. And if you want it, that's fine, but that's the way I feel. You're under.
Okay, um, we have the swearing in of the Dickinson County Board Commissioners for twenty-seventeen. I'll catch in, uh, the third, yeah. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and faithfully discharge the duties of Dickinson County Commissioner to the best of your ability, so help me God.
Thank you, Dolly.
You're welcome. Okay, and the last for this is, um, we have to, you know, set the twenty-seventeen organizational meeting of the Dickinson County Board for January third, twenty-seventeen at eleven and ten, okay? Ten o'clock AM in the Correctional Center Conference.
I do move.
I have a move.
Is there support?
Support.
Port Joe. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. All those saying sign, motion carried. Motion ordered to accept the meeting report and correspondence and place on trial.
No more. I'll move. I'll move to this place.
I'll be more.
Move by Barb. Move by John. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. All those saying sign, motion carried. Controllers, report. No report. Commission, President, John.
Uh, I have one thing, um, knowing, I mean, we need to discuss this, uh, changing that to senior manager, we're, uh, I believe that they're in need of, of that funding from the village as soon as possible, because the money from Upcap is going to come through payments, monthly payments, based on what they did the month passed. So, in order for them to continue with a, a fund in their, for the food and everything, I mean, think that they're going to need their request as soon as we can possibly agree to do that, so.
You know, I thought once the contract was signed, we were done with this through the year.
Well, we still have to agree on the amount of the village money that we're going to give them. It was, it was verbally agreed upon that it was going to be thirty-two thousand, and if that's what it's going to be, then we need to formally act on that and say that it's going to happen.
You have to adjust the budget.
Yeah, you have to adjust the budget. So, I just, I just want to make it transparent so that the public know that we're doing that.
Is, is, is the January third meeting place that we could do this for?
We'd have to wait till the first meeting in January, maybe it should be...
Well, we could put it on the January third agenda, John.
You can?
Yeah, and then meanwhile, talk to Brian first and get his opinion.
All right.
Okay, is that okay with the board? Dolly would do that, that's the January agenda. Thank you. Anything further, John?
No.
Barb?
Um, happy new year, everybody. Thank you for your support in last year.
A couple things, um, Scott and Scott, you know, there's a TV show called Mike and Mike, and he just makes about nine hundred dollars a year, and he gets to take it around the world and...
I'm not taking a cut and paying out.
You know, we get, we get qualified, we get qualified people through years and years and years, you know, it's just, it's so great for the community, so I can't thank Scott enough for what he's done through the years. To put that uniform on every day, uh, it is, it would be a real honor enough to mention going out every day in harm's way for either one of you, and whoever works in the jail, and anybody puts on a fireman's uniform, or a policeman's uniform, or military uniform, God bless them, because they leave a lot, so, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You'll do fine, and I, I'm glad, I'm glad the transition is so seamless, that's really great. They're doing it to you, to you, you know, that's, that just makes it easy. Um, talking about honors in the community, um, it is an honor to be sitting here. I often wonder, um, when I think back to high school, and I had my high school counselor talk to me about some stuff, uh, I wish he was alive once in a while, but, uh, it is an honor to serve the public, and, and, and I really appreciate, um, all the employees here in the county that do a wonderful job. And even though sometimes this board here, we can have our little spats and, and arguments, we all get along great, uh, I, I think, uh, I think this board has done, um, in my opinion, served the community well through the years, so, and I really enjoy working with Dolly all the time, and you too, we're very happy, so, that's all. I, I just, it's going to be seventeen, might be difficult, but as always, we deal with it, and we move on.
Well, I wanted to add to your sadness about Sheriff Scott, so, I don't want to start calling him Rex, I want to start calling him Scott. Uh, I can't say enough of all that he's done for this county. He come up and he's great through the ranks, all the way through, I remember when he went to the academy and the first start, he's been just great at every level he's served. And I think he's been good working with the county board. He stood up for his department, but we always got along, and I personally feel I got a lifetime friend, and Scott's hello, and that means a lot to me, so, so thanks, and to have the board again for all you've done. Okay, I usually don't say much at this meeting, but the last few months, we've been getting it down the chin or the past six months, from citizens calling for a hide, we shouldn't be re-elected, we shouldn't be taken out of the office. Well, I'm pretty proud of what we've done in the last year, and by we, I mean the board, And by we, I mean the board, the staff, elected officials, and all the employees of this county. One thing we accomplished, we turned the parks or outline parks over to the townships. It worked out good for us. It worked out extremely good for them to get a lot of volunteers and their parks are doing better now than ever. Uh, clean up Lake Anne's Line Park. There was a lot of volunteers and local business that contributed. I say thank you to them. I think another thing that we and being the whole group accomplished was the train contract. We've got two new killers out here. The other ones were twenty-five years old, way past their expected life. We got new killers, we got new lighting. They did a lot of work over the Correctional Center, correcting problems there. We got a few little pinks now, but we're sure they're gonna be worked out. Uh, Department of Veterans Affairs, and Black Village went through. We still got great contribution this year. Next year should be our last year, and this will leave them to do whatever they gotta do with us coming to the county. So I'm proud for that. Another accomplishment, what you all remember going through that. And there we did take money out of the fund balance, but that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand to secure that tower. Another thing we did that isn't complete yet, we contracted to have the Correctional Center roof fixed and the courthouse parking lot repaid. And I think a big thing was with your Brian Bowles, when we had the vacancy, I think he said it really well. And we're gonna continue to go forward. But on top of that all, with the refund that Sid mentioned, we are coming up in the black and are gonna be able to add to our fund balance. So I say for all of those who wanted to get rid of us, you better look in the mirror. Maybe you're the one that should step back. With that, I look for a motion to withdraw.
Motion, Chairman?
Moved by Bart. Support, for John, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Post, sign, motion carried.